Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March 19th, 2012 City Council Meeting, City of Waukegan. Could everybody do me a favor? Please take out their cellphone and turn it to silent so that it doesn't go off and interrupt the meeting. Sure would appreciate it. Let me make sure mine is. Yep. Could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Moiseo. President Alderman Beedling.
President.
Alderman Newsome.
President.
Alderman Tempest.
President.
Alderman May.
President.
Alderman Valco.
President.
Alderman Rivera.
President.
Alderman Cunningham.
President.
President.
All right, we have a quorum. Could everybody please rise for the moment of silence?
To vibrate a little bit.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I hope everybody's had a chance to enjoy the really strange warm weather that we've had in Waukegan for the last week or two. It's very unusual, and it scares me because I think we're going to get 40 inches of snow right as the month ends. You never know how this thing. Karma is always, there's a payback situation there, but we'll keep our fingers crossed. But it has been beautiful outside, and we had a great turnout this weekend for Art Walk. If you're not aware of it, we actually dyed the Waukegan River green. It looked great. People really had a good time downtown this weekend, so I'd encourage everybody to try to take part in that third weekend, third Saturday events downtown Art Walk. It's really starting to grow. And once again, this weekend, we ran out of parking places on Genesee Street, so that doesn't happen very often, so we're very pleased with the turnout. And following up on that, my wife and I have sponsored 35 tickets for our Waukegan first responders to the Friday, March 23rd performance of Palmer Park at Clockwise Theater so that any Waukegan firefighter, policeman, or EMT can attend that evening's performance at no charge. To get their tickets, all they need to do is to send an email to diane@clockwisetheater.org with "First Responder Friday" in the subject line and their name and number of tickets they would like. An announcement will also be going to all department heads so that they can forward that to their staff as well. Again, www-clockwisetheater.org. I haven't seen the theater. It started up this last weekend, but it's my understanding that it's a very good story. It's about, actual story about Detroit, where a community of both African-American and white families worked together to build an inclusive and diverse neighborhood at the same time Detroit was experiencing the 1967 riots. So it sounds like a very interesting story, one I'm looking forward to hearing, seeing. And as I've said before, the experience of being in that Clockwise Theater and sitting so close to the performances is quite unique. There's a lot of energy, and I really think that those of us, and I wasn't a playperson myself before they opened, but after I've gone to a few, I've really gotten to appreciate the dynamics of a small cast, small theater, stage play. So I really would recommend that everybody take a shot at going and seeing this production before it ends. It's a lot of fun.
And the dates again, Mayor?
Well, it's going through...
Through April 8th.
April 8th, thank you.
Every?
Every weekend. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Fridays, at what time?
Eight o'clock on Friday and February, and Sunday at three o'clock.
Three o'clock on Sundays?
Yep. So they're very well done, and we've had some really, really talented Waukegan performers featured in these plays, and so I really would recommend it. I won't say anymore. You know, I got a call from an elderly woman named Ms. Thompson asking me about why the city of Waukegan didn't have more assisted living facilities, why it is that we really just haven't developed that in the city. And, you know, it's something that I would like us to take as a discussion item and think among ourselves and possibly through economic development, look at how we can reach out and see if there's any opportunities right now for assisted living in existing building stock, or if something were to become available or open in the next several months in the area, how we can try to direct a organization into an available building. Because I have to tell you, you know, my generation is now reaching its late 50s, 60s, and, you know, most of us never really saw ourselves as ever being in need of assisted living, but you know that's not true. We're all going to need it at some point, and if as a community we don't build a base for assisted living, I think it'll come back to haunt us in the future. So it's something that we're going to take seriously, and we're going to undertake to see if we can't find an interested party group and have them come into Waukegan and try to find a good location. We received a letter a few weeks ago, and I had meant to read this a couple of weeks ago, but it got set aside unfortunately, from Christian Neighbors Church located on 212 South Martin Luther King. And it was addressed to our Building Commissioner, Dave Marion. And I'd like to read the letter because, you know, it's really easy just to dwell on the complaints, but it's nice when you get a letter like this thanking the people that work so hard for us for their services. So, "Dear Mr. Marion, as you may remember, Christian Neighbors Church recently passed our final inspection and concluded a renovation project that lasted the better part of a year. Since completing the renovation, we have held several Sunday services and are delighted that we are now able to provide Waukegan residents with an opportunity to gather for worship in our neighborhood. Now that we are reflecting on the highlights and challenges of renovating the property, I want you to know that interacting with you and your employees about this renovation was one of the most enjoyable aspects of the entire project. Your willingness to work with our volunteers, your helpful attitude, and your conscientious direction throughout the project made us so grateful for you and your staff. Thank you for serving us and other Waukegan residents in such an exemplary way. Lucas McFadden, Pastor, Christian Neighbors Church." So Dave, kudos to you and your staff. Thank you very much for all that you do, and everybody up here certainly appreciates all the hard work that all of our employees put in on a day-to-day basis. One last thing. Today, I attended a meeting at the Kylie Center. As many of you may be aware, and some of you may not, the state of Illinois is entering into another round of human resources cuts, and they're going to be deep. And Kylie Center is on the chopping block for maybe not entirely shutting down the facility, but certainly they'll lose some staff and personnel. And I really would ask each of us up here to draft letters, send them out to the Governor's Office. Senator Link was there, so we don't really need to send them to Terry because he really supports keeping Kylie Center open and always has, but we need to send letters to the Governor's Office, I think probably to Representative Madigan's Office, probably to Senator Cullerton's Office, because to let him know that the people of Waukegan support this facility, support their mission, and we want to keep it open, because we've seen what happens when we don't have facilities like this. If you remember the old days of the chateau, when we had all of those distressed individuals in our downtown, some of them walking around half naked in their pajamas, accosting individuals, and it's unfortunate that that was, they were forced into that situation. We don't want to ever return to that type of environment. It's not healthy for the city, but more so, it's wrong, it's morally wrong, that if we don't stand up and treat those among us who are the least capable of protecting and defending for themselves. So I would ask that everybody, you know, take a chance. It doesn't have to be long, nothing complex, maybe a paragraph, and just remind the Governor and those that I mentioned that we do want the Kylie Center to remain open here in the city of Waukegan. It's an important asset for us. We have audience time. We do have a few people that have signed up. Bear with me, I know I've just piled some stuff on top of it. First off is Todd Benning. Todd?
Thank you, Council and fellow citizens of Waukegan. My name is Todd Benning. I reside at 32 North Genesee Street. Proud to be a Waukegannite. I grew up here. Proud to be back in the community, offering the assistance that I can through various volunteer efforts and such. I too delighted in what we had to offer, once again, with an Art Walk that was well-attended. And I'd like to transition into another green topic here, and before I do that, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I'm one of the co-founders of Friends of Waukegan Beach, and that's an effort, a grassroots effort, that basically when crossing guards and lifeguards were, had to be let go, we formed this group and looked to protect our, one of Waukegan's wonderful natural assets, the beach and the dunal area. Before I talk about what I'm going to talk about tonight, I want to tell you a brief story about my passion, or one of my passions here in Waukegan with that natural area and the importance of it. Back in 2009, up at the beach along the Johns Manville property, an endangered shorebird called the piping plover nested up there, and IDNR, Illinois Department of Natural Resources, was monitoring that. One of the things they did, because this is an endangered species and it's low in numbers around here, is basically fence in that nesting area that allowed the parents to go back and forth, but protect it from predators like coyotes that roam the beach and gulls and other shorebirds that may actually attack those eggs. What IDNR didn't realize that they were going to do is basically scare the parents off. When they realized after a day or so that the parents weren't coming back, those eggs were picked up, transported down to Lincoln Park Zoo where they were incubated and hatched. Once those nestlings hatch, they were flown to a sanctuary in Michigan where these endangered piping plovers are doing pretty well and raised by foster parents over there. In 2010, when I returned to Waukegan, and I was unemployed at the time, and so I was involved in various groups and actively doing photography of some of our great natural areas here, including the dunal area, I came across these birds and photographed them and got involved through Lake County Audubon and IDNR, came back out the next day and documented the fact that these birds lived here. One of the things that I noticed later that day when I zoomed in on those digital photos is those birds were banded. And basically, I called my contact back at IDNR and said, "Hey, I got some important information to share with you." And I said, "Zoom in on my photos that I sent you of these birds." And it was about a half a year later that I found this out. Somebody didn't share this with me until about a half a year later. Those were the birds that the parents nested and laid those eggs up at Johns Manville in 2009. And I think that goes to the point of how important this habitat is. It's federally protected habitat. These are endangered species. They're not the only endangered species in this natural habitat. Let me tell you a brief little story too about my childhood and about basically geology that's happening along our lakeshore. I grew up here, and in the early 70s, we used to go down to what is South Ditch down there, where Seahorse Drive makes that turn to the south, and there used to be a concession stand. You could walk maybe 100 feet out there and you'd be standing in the lake. Today, it takes a good quarter-mile walk to reach the water of Lake Michigan. This is a natural geographic or geology phenomena that's occurring. It's been occurring for the last 3,500 years where this sand, it's called littoral drift, and it migrates down the shoreline. The uniqueness of this event is that it's adding a living dunal succession laboratory here in Waukegan that's gaining notoriety on both a local, regional, and national attention. It's our opportunity to re-green ourself from another, a number of ways. One that has happened already is the prairie, the wet prairie out in the 9th Ward, but this is another one, and it's important to protect this habitat. And here's my point today. Last week, some of my friends from our Facebook page of Friends of Waukegan Beach photo-documented, we didn't catch the person in action, but somebody not only dumped out there, they basically drove a vehicle out across the dunal area, along that South Ditch area, and threw trash out there. The issue is not trash, that's only part of the problem. The problem is that we need to protect that dunal habitat out there. This is part of Waukegan. It's a unique part. It's what's going to help us re-green the city. I guarantee it. And so I'm here tonight to offer, once again, my assistance to the city on behalf of Friends of Waukegan Beach, our partners, which is Alliance of the Great Lakes, Waukegan Harbor Citizens Advisory Group and their partners, which include Chicago Wilderness, to take proactive measures to prevent that. Some of the other issues that are going on out there include dogs out on the beach, and that's really detrimental to all types of shorebirds. These are ground nesting birds, and it's really important to keep the dogs off the beach. We can work to find other areas for these dogs to be, and Friends has done that in terms of, in terms of if you want your dog to be out in Lake Michigan, there's two nearby beaches where you can do that. That's Pleasant Prairie, Wisconsin, and that's Fort Sheridan, Illinois, a part of the Lake County Forest Preserve. And both of those are free public access for you and your dogs. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Violet Ricker.
My name is Violet Ricker. I live at 203 West Water Street, and I'm also the Director of Waukegan Main Street, which is our downtown development nonprofit organization. I'm just here tonight to thank the city and to thank the Waukegan Police Department for helping us have a wonderful night last Saturday for Art Walk. That Friday evening, we had sold-out shows at Clockwise Theater and the Genesee Theater, very busy up and down the street. And then Saturday, I've touched base with most of the business owners who participated, and everybody had a great night. A lot of the galleries sold art. A lot of people were out there having a good time. The police gave me a good report that we had a very good crowd down there that evening. So I just want to remind everybody that Art Walks are every third Saturday, and so the next one is April 21st. If you haven't had a chance to come yet, please put that date on your calendars. And we're also always looking for new artists to display. So if you know anybody, or if you yourself are an artist, I'd encourage you to send an email to info@artwalk, W-A-U-K, dot com, or to call the Main Street Office at 847-623-6650. And again, Palmer Park is an amazing show. I'd certainly recommend that everybody get a chance to check it out. You can get tickets to that through clockwisetheater.org. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Violet. You know, you made me think of something I forgot to mention during my comments too, and I want to thank the Police Chief and all of the guys in the department for all the good work that they've done. You know, we've had some incidents here in the last few weeks that they unnerve all of us, but you know what? You guys did a great job. You've caught these guys, you know, and we really do owe you our thanks for being so effective, so speedy, and you don't, you know, you don't normally get that. You don't get enough of that. So we just want to let you know, we do appreciate it. And I'm sorry, I got busy reading all this other stuff, and I meant to mention that during my comments, but, you know, Chief, every time I get an email from you, there's been an incident over here, it's almost invariably within 72 hours, I get another email saying we've got the guy, or we know who they are, we're right on their tail. So, you know, you guys deserve congratulations, and if I, I don't want to seem, you know, like I'm grandstanding, but I think you deserve a round of applause. Could we give them? And you know me, Chief, I don't usually say something unless I mean it. So I really do. Thanks, and thanks to everything that all you guys do, so we do appreciate that. Next, we have Chris Blanks.
Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan, Illinois, abolitionist, founder, president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind and National Action Network of Lake County. Which brings me to this. Our national organizational president, Reverend L. Sharpton, was in Waukegan this weekend, as some of you know. It was a really nice event that was sponsored by the Lake County Civil Rights Hall of Fame. So it was an event that was sponsored by them, and all funds and proceeds from that was for and went towards the Lake County Civil Rights Hall of Fame and not towards or went for National Action Network of Lake County or Black Abolition Movement for the Mind, but overall, it was a really good event. So, other than that, what I wanted to make mention of, you know, in spite of the fact I know how much many of you or some of you as council members really like and appreciate when I come before my presence here at the City Council Meeting and miss me when I'm absent. And in spite of the fact I know how much Alderman Tempers really love it when I step up here to this podium to speak, but in spite of that, to disappointment, to the disappointment of some of you, I'm going to be winding down my time here speaking at the City Council Meeting. I really want to get on to doing other things in which I have a passion for, and that is formulating and putting together initiatives and programs for the future of our youth in the community. And sometimes this kind of takes me from that, so that's what I'm looking at doing and winding down my time here. But I would say, that's if you all allow me to, because I really don't want to come here unless there's some issues that really needs to be addressed. But in doing so, there's three things I want to mention and I want to bring about tonight, which I think is in the best interest of the city in the spirit of solutions, because whenever I do come to speak, I want to try to speak in the spirit of solutions. One of the things I want to speak of in the spirit of what's fair and just, what we consider what we have here is the three-minute rule, the three-minute rule in the City Council chambers here. And in some of the so-called ordinance, and the reason I say so-called, because Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King has taught us that, you know, any rule or ordinance that is unfair in his practice is really no law at all. So we have here what we call the three-minute rule. The reason I'm bringing this forth is because I want to see what I can do to avoid in the future the city having to go through senseless and irresponsible lawsuits that could be avoided. The last time I spoke here at the City Council Meeting, that was when Alderman Pro-Temp Valco was here, and one of the Aldermans, I believe, one of the Aldermans, I think it was Alderman Beedling, which had went, attempted to stop me at what he had deemed as three minutes. And my thing is, and Alderman, I mean the mayor pro temp here allowed me an additional two minutes, and I just want to say in the spirit of what's fair, if you're going to put such an ordinance or rule in place, make sure it's fair and equitable for all the citizens and not just implement it at will. And what, and the reason I say that is because I had taken short notice that the City Council Meeting before I had spoke, there was a lady who was here who was speaking, Mayor, you was here then, about the attack on herself and her dog. And so she went on, she spoke about four minutes, and she came back up for additional couple of minutes, and she spoke well past the three minutes, okay? And then even the City Council, and then even the City Council Meeting after I spoke during that last time when Alderman Valco was here, there was a lady who came up and she spoke regarding, I think it was the building at 10 Sheraton. And she went on for, I would say even anywhere from easily eight to nine minutes. And all I want to say is that in the fairness of what's just for all the citizens, if you're going to implement these rules, they should be done in fairness for everyone and not just because you might not agree with what I say or some of the other citizens have to say. So these rules have to be carried out in practice with fairness and equality to avoid the citizens from going through, this city from going through lawsuits, which I know is not prepared to pay, and I know that some of the Aldermans cannot afford the cash. Okay, so that's number one. I just got a couple more things. That was the three-minute rule. Also, ward meetings. I think ward meetings are designed to determine the will and the concerns and the interests of the constituents. And if we're not having ward meetings in our wards, then one could easily question if an Alderman is not representing the will and the interests of his citizens by holding ward meetings, then whose will and interest are he serving or she other than their own self-serving political agenda? And so I think ward meetings are important because it determines the will, because you are able to put the thumb on what your citizens want from you, as well as keeping them informed on what's on the agenda coming up of the City Council, of the city, whether it be construction projects, art space, whether it be construction projects coming up at the college, so that, you know, the citizens can, how would I say, address themselves accordingly, be able to take advantage of some of these, and you all can keep the citizens informed on what's going on. So I know ward meetings are very important. Please, let's not take that for granted and hold some ward meetings. Those, I know for many of you do, but I'm just speaking for those where we have not had ward meetings in a while. I'm not calling any names, but we can just take that from there. Last but not least, you know, nobody has been probably out of this City Council Chamber a bigger critic of the Police Department probably than myself. And I'll say this, that if there are some issues that are regarding the police that I think is unfair, I think you all know without me having to say it, I will be right back up in here again, if that be the case. But I want to say this. As far as law enforcement, I have noticed, I have seen a noticeable difference of improvement in law enforcement in the first ward and throughout this city in my community without what is considered as the net unit. I'm not taking any shots here, but I'm telling you what I noticed as someone who has been as critical of the police, so I think it's only right if I see some improvement, I should be able to speak on that basis as well, on what's right. I have noticed an improvement in the first ward. I've noticed that there has definitely been an improvement in the communications with the citizens of that ward recently than there have been in a long time. Now, under the administration of William B. Ang, those, what I would consider is relationship was very torn, jagged, in that, under that administration, we had the highest amount of excessive force and brutality and the lowest amount of respect for the citizens, from what I've seen based on many of the complaints that have registered at our organization and the many times that I have had to come here before this City Council. I'm winding my time down because I don't want to take advantage and prolong the three minutes, but I'm just asking to give me the fairness of the time that many have had that came before and after me as I'm winding down my time here. So I want to say that, I want to say that in the spirit that as one who has been as critical of the police as I have, I've noticed an improvement without the net unit, because unfortunately, many times as the net unit came through my ward on the south side, they have came, many times they've come with a Gestapo-type tactics and attitudes, and no disrespect towards you, but I'm just telling you what I've noticed in my times and my tender here. So I wanted to say that, I want to continue to try to work with the city in the spirit of what's in solutions and what's fair and equitable. We are an organization that is based on social justice and equality for all the citizens, so I just want to make sure what is done in this city is fair and just across the board for all citizens, especially for those who are trying to do right and abide by the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Calvin Mathis.
I was here...
Oh, Mr. Mathis, could you give us your address, please?
I'm sorry. My name is Calvin Mathis. I live at 528 Leath Avenue. I was here last fall for a council meeting. It was my first council meeting, and I was really enlightened and actually enjoyed it. Some very interesting things that happened during that council meeting, and my issue, if you recall, was the traffic lights. I had gotten two of those traffic lights up there, and I was a little bit upset about it, you know, $100. But actually, and I spoke about, I had actually was found not liable for one, but I just wanted, the two points I wanted to talk about actually was the traffic lights and also my opinion on, I think the people are kind of letting the City Council down. Those are the two points I kind of wanted to talk about. But to follow up on the feedback on the traffic lights, I did pursue that and thank you to Ms. Streech, Ms. Amy there. She did provide the information, well, she made an effort to give me the information that I needed to say that the traffic lights had been updated, and of course, she didn't, she couldn't find that information. She referred me to I.DOT, you know, and in life, I've learned, you got to pick and choose your ballots, and I didn't want to pursue that with I.DOT. If the traffic lights are updated, there's no record of the city having that done, so, but I'm not going to pursue that. That's not the issue for me today. Maybe if somebody wants to pursue that, I'll leave that up to them. But I was watching the City Council Meeting on television last weekend. I had bumped into Mr. Cunningham in the barber shop, and I asked him a question about something, a lobbyist that had came here that night. I was here last fall, and I asked him, "Hey, did he, that guy get that contract that you guys wanted for the gambling?" And he said, "Nope, nope." And he said, nope, nope, he didn't get it, but he's going to be working on something else for us. And then I noticed it was just a short conversation with Mr. Cunningham and so, I come, I came home that same night, I got on the computer and I looked at Yahoo News and it says Waukegan lobbyist, Waukegan Alderman wants to chop lobbyists. Had a picture of Mr. Tempus there. I have the article right here. And so, it got my attention because that just happened to be the subject that I had asked about. And so, I read the article and, you know, it was very interesting because that subject of the lobbyist coming before the council meeting came up the night I was here, the first meeting. And I thought it was kind of strange that I must have missed something because he just came in and it was like he got ninety grand to lobby for the city. You know, me being new to the city council meeting, I just figured I missed something. I don't come to the city council meeting, so who am I to judge? Ninety grand, they, they're more informed than I am. But as I read the article, I noticed that he didn't get the contract. So, I would figure that, okay, it failed through, Senator Lincoln said in the article, came through and assured Waukegan that you wouldn't get the contract, the gambling contract. And so, Mr. Tempus made some good points here, that that remainder of the balance of the money could be used for other things for the city. But I noticed that Ms. May also made good points that, well, we need to do things to get business here and the mayor also noted that also. So, I noticed in the article, there was good points, I guess, for and against. But for me, like I said, being a citizen, I think, I look at these city council meetings and when I see it on TV, the chairs are usually empty. And I think the people, I'm going to take my responsibility, I think the people sometimes let the city council down because we're not here to say one way or the other to support our Alderman one way or the other. And I would support Mr. Tempus here to say that that money, that remainder of the money, although I wasn't for the gambling initially, but the remainder of that money could be used for better things that the city need. I know when I was here before, Mr. Blanks came up and he had a whole group of kids and God bless him, he works with the kids, does more for the community than I do. And I thought that, you know, for those kids, they could have, I thought they had a good program. They were buying lives, they were taking the kids out to show them how to garden or whatever. There's a thought for the money. Mr. Tempus said the police could use a little bit of that for hiring police and I do want it. I think that was a great thing when you recognized the chief because I saw the chief during Christmas time in Walmart with a bunch of kids and him and his, his men that worked with him. And that was a great thing. And I really, since I've lived here in Waukegan for almost twenty years, I have no complaints against the police. I think they do a good job. Now, I don't know, I don't live all over the city and Mr. Blanks may object, but I want to commend the police also for the good job they do. I think they are somewhat a little tough, but they have a tough job. And so, I commend them also. Again, the city is, I think, I'm from the country, by the way, I just want to say I'm from Mississippi. If you notice that in my voice, I come from a small town. I love Waukegan because it has that small-town feel. But lately, I noticed that we've been having big-city problems. But the police, they keep it really that small-town feel and I want to compliment you also on a good job. And you can tell your police officers that also. But that's one option. The environmentalists just came here, that money could be used to, in fact, we could have Brother Blanks and the environmentalists get together, give them some money and maybe we can invest in the children. I guess that's what my point would be in that money. I think that money, to wrap it up, I think that money, that remainder of that balance, although I can see the alternatives of getting more infrastructure to the city, but I think the remainder of that balance of that money could go to investment in the children or in the city of Waukegan in a better way. And as my Alderman, Moisa, Moiso noted in the article, he also said, why are we paying the lobbyists to do the job that we should be doing? And he's my Alderman, I'm proud of you. And I called you, I'm the one who emailed you and I was going to talk to you because I wanted to give you some support and say that, I can't speak for everybody, but I can speak for me as an individual, that whatever I can do to help you, I'll work with you to better the community, I'm going to try and do my part from this point forward. So, that was my, those two points I wanted to make at this council meeting.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Just so you, you know, everybody understands, the gaming issue has not even remotely been settled. They have no bill downstate, nobody's gotten the casino yet, no one has been awarded one way or the other. So, there's still a lot of work left to be done on that. I think that some of the Aldermen up here consider would like to keep us in play in trying to get the casino in Waukegan. And that's, this is one of the ways of doing it. But you talked about resources for our police. Our lobbyist is working on, with us, to try to get grants from the Department of Justice to be able to possibly bring more police officers to Waukegan. Also, grants, money for programs that can help children, that can help us to develop certain parts of the community as far as where money hasn't been spent probably in levels that it should be. But I'm not going to defend it right now, but I do appreciate your comments are very well-put and very well-thought-out. Thank you very much. Next is Mr. Steve Jocenko.
Hi, my name is Steve Jocenko. I'm at 2603 Ninth Parkway. I've lived in Waukegan all my life, born and raised. I'm here to speak on behalf of some of the other residents in my community where I live and some of the issues have been really, the neighborhood obviously has been changing with the economy, with the housing, a lot of empty houses are in the neighborhood and some of the empty houses are now being rented. And unfortunately, the renters are not taking care of the property like a lot of the homeowners. And, you know, we're starting to, people are starting to feel unsafe in the neighborhood. Recently, we've had issues where we've got a neighbor that basically, you know, multiple cars throughout the day and night, loud parties, swearing, multiple things that are just feeling, making us feel unsafe. Talking with some of the other neighbors, you know, we've called the police, the police go out there, you know, they warn them, they tell them that their neighbors are upset. The police leave, you can hear the people yelling and laughing and joking and saying ha-ha-ha and they turn up the music or they, you know, they still do what they're doing. Recently, this weekend, we had an issue and, you know, they were drinking and partying and later somebody had left and ran over the, had run, ran over the water main, you know, for the fire hydrant. And of course, water had been leaking for probably several hours. I called the police because I happened to hear the noise and saw a car taking off and reported it. But the issue is, is that I called the police department and of course, they tell me that, you know, they can't give citations, which, you know, we have a loud music ordinance. And what good is a loud music ordinance if they're going out there and they're not giving a citation for it? You know, this has been happening for the last couple summers. And then, you know, the police, they tell me that, you know, we need to go out there and make a formal complaint. Well, the last thing I want to do is go out there and make a formal complaint and they see me making the complaint and they know where the, where the complaint, you know, where it's coming from. I can't have that. You know, my wife, she doesn't want me going out there, she doesn't want to draw attention to my property. My neighbors feel the same way. They call the police, the police come out, they go away and the same thing happens again and again. So, the main issue that we have is we don't know what to do. You know, we felt that we've taken steps, you know, to try to help protect the neighborhood, but, but again, you know, the owner of the property, he needs to maybe be contacted, something needs to be done, we need some help. And that's all we're looking for is that maybe if we call the police that, something can be done, they can be cited, they can be ticketed, they can be arrested. I mean, there's, I mean, there's many things that are going, I can only assume, you know, drugs, prostitution, all the above, but, you know, people just don't go back and forth, you know, all day and night, you know, it's just not normal. Second issue is, is that we live near the forest preserve, we live off of Willow Road and like one of the other gentlemen was mentioning, you know, we live near the forest preserve and unfortunately on Willow Road, Willow Road is, it's a two-lane road and people like to dump their tires, they dump garbage and they just made it a big dumping site. And of course, it's not good for the animals, for the deer, you know, who have to deal with that and obviously, things can probably get in the water as well. So, you know, I brought up the attention with Tom, you know, maybe we could close the road down, maybe we can make it a one-way. People like to go from Belvedere and they cross over to Ten Street, they come from Ten Street and they go to Belvedere. So, when they're cutting through, they're cutting through at forty, forty miles an hour. You know, during the day, there's kids out there, you know, so, you know, just waiting for one day to, you know, somebody's going to get hurt because these people obviously don't care. That's pretty much it. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Well, thank you for coming.
Your Honor.
We'll, we'll give you a call on, I want to talk to you about some of the things you talked about tonight, especially the dumping. And, you know, we do have a much more strict ordinance than we used to have. The fine is up to seven hundred and fifty dollars. It's just a matter of finding the manpower to catch people because you know how it is, they dump at two in the morning. It's tough to have enough people out there watching for it, but I'll...
I've been actually, a couple of times I've been riding my bike there and I actually saw some, but I didn't have, unfortunately, I didn't have a camera, my camera wasn't at the time.
Do you have a license plate?
Too dark.
Okay.
There's no light, there's a little light at the corner where you can't see. Maybe if we had more lights, if we actually, I know the new camera's expensive, obviously a lot more light would help, you know, maybe some more controls. We used to, we used to have an officer who would, be at the end of the McRee who would stop people who were going through the neighborhood because there's a sign that says if you own the neighborhood, you can't pass through. And obviously, I understand that, you know, we're short on budget. You know, it's a great sign, it says no dumping, fine, and of course, that's where the dumping is.
Right. I agree. Alderman Conken.
Your Honor, this is in my neighborhood, I've already talked to Steve about this. I'm going to be setting up a meeting between him, myself and our community liaison officer, patrol and big A, and the chief is back there and I'm sure he'd be willing to talk to you. But, yeah, we'll set something up, like I said, this week, probably Wednesday or Thursday evening. I'll get ahold of her, make sure she's available and then we'll sit down and we'll discuss the problem house that you've got and we'll take care, or try to take care of these issues. And I've been harping, you know, about the dumping on Willow Road for quite a while now. I'm hoping that what we've got on public safety will help take care of that, but we'll see.
Thank you, Alderman. Next is Gabrielle Hostallet. Did I pronounce that even close?
Yes.
Okay. If you would just introduce yourself and give us your address, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. My name is Gabrielle Hostallet and I live in Skokie and I am the president of K.E.I. Landscaping. And hopefully, I am here to see if I can save the city of Waukegan approximately fifty-two thousand dollars. A few days ago, I entered in a bid for the landscaping project, which consisted primarily in two main, three parts was the bid. But the two main parts of the contract was fertilization and weed control and the other one was landscape maintenance, which consisted in mowing and edging and just keeping the flower and so forth, yes, in a prime condition. When we went to the bid opening, we were very happy when we left and a few days later, I called Tom Haggerty and I said, well, we were the law responsible bidder, when are you going to send us the contract? And surprising to me, he said, no, because there's another section of the proposal which consisted in bacon loa mowing. And I told him, well, bacon loa mowing normally consists, when I was here a few years ago, which I had the contract for the city of Waukegan for several years and it was very successful and everyone in the city was very happy with our work. It said it used to be very small amount of bacon because most of the work was done by the public works and there were very large bacon property. And normally, when cities have bacon property, they're very large, they're acres, two, three, four, five acres, they're very large bacon lots. The smaller bacon lots annoy part of the contract. See, well, but, you know, in this case, you should know, it's hard what you're going to know, never, never was presented how many bacon lots were in the contract or how much, or how big they were. So, I spoke to Mr. Wayne Muddley at length and I explained my situation. And I say, listen, it really is a shame that the city would spend fifty-two thousand dollars for something that's not part of the main proposal of the contract, is the main concern of the contract. So, he said, well, come over and present it to the, to the city. So, I did that. And when I talked to Tom Haggerty and to Mr. Muddley, when I talked to them, is the following. Because this is not part of the contract, you have other alternative, yes, give the contract to the responsible bidder and then the bacon lot, you have different choices. You can give it to any of the three companies that participate in the contract. You can make a negotiation and try to get the lower bid possible for any of the three bidders and then get the best of the two worlds. You get the best responsible law bidders for the main part of the contract and for the bacon lot, get to the next law bidder separately from the contract. Oh, well, I don't know that. So, I left it in that way and I came here to, to make the presentation. I have here some of the notes that I sent to the, I don't have really like five, you can maybe pass it around. And when I discussed it with them, also, myself and the president, I have a master's degree in engineering, I have over forty years' knowledge of landscaping, I have several years done the landscaping work in Waukegan, I know the city of Waukegan very well, my wife is a horticulturist, I have an arborist in our staff and I have very professional and knowledgeable individuals in the landscape that can do an excellent work for Waukegan. Our company installed in the, for Lake County, in the courthouse, the front and the back, we did all that installation and landscape. And Mr. Walheim, which was the purchasing manager, he was extremely pleased with the professionals and the good work that we did. We have worked for the city of Winnecah, with Med, Skokie, we have worked for other cities for many, many years and they are all happy and favorable in good comments about my company. So, but I ask you, Mayor, and council members, to please consider these alternatives, they will save a lot of money to Waukegan and will provide the best services to the city of Waukegan.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next is Mr. Dale Shay.
Good evening, City Council. Dale Shay, 11 North Genesee Street. I own the subway building on Genesee Street, referred to as a subway building quite commonly. I was looking for resolution as to the decision that the city council, I'm not sure jointly made. Demetrius of Federal Parkway and I were up here for quite a few meetings and looking for some kind of an agreement on parking in terms of purchasing or leasing or, you know, putting meters back at the Lot Thirty, Sheraton Road. And I've really never gotten an answer. I've emailed various Alder, Aldermen, Alder persons, if that's correct, and never gotten an answer. And I'm just looking, I'm still struggling with, with being able to bring clients by when Genesee Street is totally filled up and bring people in for, you know, five, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes or two hours. And I've got no metered parking, you know, available to me anywhere. So, when I inquired, there's no answer. We've decided not to sell, we've decided not to lease it and I would just like this to be addressed and I have one more point after, if I can get an answer to that, so...
Why don't you make your, your second point, if you would, please?
Well, my second, my second point is, you know, I like what I see in a lot of areas of Waukegan, you know, the art space that's going up, the, I guess that a new building is eventually going up with C.L.C. where the, where the new sun building was, is that correct, Mayor?
Yes.
I want to draw the council's attention to the fact that I'm sure that the Cowesaw Lake County, you know, put a lot of engineering and a lot of time in designing or looking to put a new building there. And the first thing that they did was they got rid of essentially the retaining wall and they did that by creating a slope, a gentle slope from, you know, the alley down to Sheraton Road. And I think that the, that the city may be missing an op- And I think that the, that the city may be missing an opportunity in, in carrying that all the way over to the Genesee Theater. I'm sorry, is that Clayton Street right there? You know, right there. It, in, in essence, you've got a lot of maintenance there with a sheer drop off. You've got a railing, you've got a retaining wall. There would be an expense to continue that sloped, uh, landscape all the way across to Clayton. Uh, there's some infrastructure that would have to be raised. But I continue, I firmly believe that, uh, part of the success of Genesee Street lies in Sheridan Road. There's not enough, uh, you know, traffic. It's, it's very difficult for people to drive down, uh, Genesee Street and find a parking spot. Many times, they're skirting the city and taking their business elsewhere. I, I think that, um, people have told me, uh, Alderman Tempest has told me that years ago, all of the parking for, uh, Genesee Street and the different shopping, uh, stores on Genesee Street, the parking occurred right where I'm talking about, on, on Sheridan Road and where the parking garage is now. And I think that, you know, that sheer retaining wall is a barrier, you know, to additional, uh, uh, business, you know, coming down Sheridan Road. People parking right there and having ease of access, uh, to the businesses. A lot of the businesses have, have kind of blocked off the, the back end of their, of their stores there to the Sheridan roadside because years ago, when the parking went away, however that happened, uh, they focused everything towards Genesee Street. Well, we're in a transition where you've lost the parking on Sheridan Road. People switched to Genesee Street. Now there's no parking on Genesee Street, and there's this big struggle. And whenever there's transition, there's a lot of pain. So I just want to bring that to the city council's, uh, attention, that there could be an opportunity to shift a little bit of, uh, foot traffic and actual vehicular, uh, patronage, uh, over to Genesee via Sheridan Road. So it's something to think about, and it's something that I've seen there. I would like an answer to the question.
Thank you.
As to what's happening on Lot 30.
Well, the lot, we, we're still trying to figure out which is the best legal way to transfer property that the city owns. We weren't quite sure that making this offer to two individual business people was actually the best way to, to proceed with this without making this a public matter, which would have been to put the property up for sale, have it appraised. All of that needed, we felt, we really needed to make sure we were doing this correctly. We have discussed, Wayne and I have talked about putting meters in the lot behind you in the parking lot so that you can have some spots there. Um, it's, it's something that we're giving some consideration to a possible range of solutions. There's still the issue too of the chateau, not the chateau, but it used to be called the chateau as far as where they're parking, and the agreement that we have with that, with the, you know, previous owners of the building, which we still consider to be in effect. So we're still trying to explore which will be the best legal way to make this work. But I think that, um, you know, you are 10 feet away, 15 feet away from the entrance to the parking lot. One of the problems is that a lot of those spots right along there have been occupied by our squad cars in the past. And we have talked to the chief about doing something about that and about getting, probably trying to get meters in there. So we are trying to figure out the best legal solution that won't put the city into a bad spot as far as transferring or selling property improperly, and maybe coming up with a solution that won't require the sale of the property at all. So Dale, I promise you, once we kind of move along and try to get a better direction on it, we will let you know where we're headed. And, um, Alderman Tempest, please.
I went down to the parking lot one day, a number of time ago, and we had some inspections going on at the corner there. And I pulled in the parking lot, I said, by permit only, by permit only. The meters were in there at that time with duct tape all around. I went to our city clerk, what is going on? Now, I go by there during the day, if I see one or two cars parked in that total parking lot, I'm lucky. I pull in the park, I can't park there, but it says by permit only. There's no meter anymore for me to park. So what we've taken away is visible, short-term parking. I go on Genesee Street to go in the sandwich shop. There's no meters available, but I could park in the back there, knowing my way around if there was a meter. But we took the meters out, it never came before this body to our parking lot. I guess we just made a decision. I think at one time he had to because he had to give the parking spaces to the chateau, and that's why you taped them up, and then they didn't pay for their parking spaces anymore. Now where are we? But I think we would get a compromise. We had some, some meters on one side there for short-term anyway.
Well, I agree. I think we need to look at that. I think that's probably the best solution to try to figure out how to get the people into your, your sandwich shop there that's in your property. But it's...
In the old days, you could park and walk right into the stores from the parking lot.
Right.
In the old days.
The old days.
Just one more comment.
Okay, Dale.
To address that.
Sure.
Be on my way here. I, I, I can appreciate the answer, for sure. Mayor, before you were mayor, I had you come up and take a look at, at what was going on out there. A lot of the council people, you don't think that I was, you know, just out here in the last six months when, uh, you know, there was an issue of gee, is Demetrius going to get this, or, or am I going to get it, or both of us? And, uh, you know, five years ago, I was, uh, you know, on the Main Street Committee working with Teddy Anderson and trying to create an association in which we could all share, uh, that parking lot. Uh, you know, that kind of fell apart. We had designs for a sign that all of the businesses would participate in. So I've tried many, many different ways, and, and for one reason or another, they've kind of, you know, fallen flat. And I, and I guess I think I need that, I, I just wanted to make that clarification that, that it seems that, um, you know, human nature is, you know, all self-interest and only, you know, people come out here when they have just a self-interest at heart. Yeah, that's, that's the nature of, of business. But I think there's a lot of people here tonight and, you know, a lot of people here, you know, all, all month long, all year long, that are looking for other people's interests. And, you know, that's what we're all wanting to do is trying to get all the businesses profitable. And I, I think if we work together, you know, that, you know, we can do it. Their, Genesee Street will, will not truly be profitable or, or really be vibrant until this parking situation is, is really solved. And it's a very, very complicated issue because of C L C and the county seat. It's not an easy issue. So, um, thank you, and I'll wait for...
We'll keep you in the loop. I promise you that, Dale. Absolutely. You know what? Yeah, let the, let the clerk address this very briefly so that...
Dale, before you go, um, a, a short-term solution to that problem, we are going to put the meters back into the garage, and we're going to restrict parking, no parking from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. That would allow you to have parking for those hours. It would address the issues that I have currently about people not purchasing monthly parking passes. So this will address your concern by putting, uh, parking their, uh, meters back in the lot in the lower levels, and then restrict parking from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. So that would address that issue.
Anything is appreciated on the way in, and, uh, you know, not to look a gift horse in the mouth. When I am directing clients, and, and I have many, many first-time clients, it seems to be such a struggle to get them into the parking garage for one reason or another. You know, once they get in and they turn around and they find their parking slot and things like that, it seems they could turn around. I mean, even if I had five meters in that, in that open lot, it, you know, that would be so easy because I'd say, hey, just, you know, hit Washington, you know, Washington, Sheridan, take a quick, um, left turn north, and, and there's a parking lot right there. Bring a couple quarters.
Dale, can you, can you come to my office tomorrow morning? We'll, we'll, we'll address that tomorrow. You and I can address that, okay? All right. Thank you.
Wayne, you referring to the open lot or the garage?
Well, Larry, I think it's...
You didn't, you didn't specify.
He wants, Dale wants them in the lot, the open lot, which is not an issue with me. It's just coming to the, coming to, to resolve the issue of the meters and the parking restrictions that we have to apply to those meters, simply because if we don't put, uh, some kind of restriction on there, what happens is the people who, the people don't buy monthly parking passes, and they park there all day and all night, and there's an issue with that. So Dale, we can address this tomorrow. Come, if you've come to see me, we'll, we'll put meters wherever we need to do it for you.
Always. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, yep. That concludes public comment. Thanks, everybody, for all of your comments. We appreciate them. We have a lot of business before us tonight, so let's try to move on. First, I'll take a motion to approve, uh, the minutes of the March 5th, 2012 regular meeting. Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Valco. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Now, um, we have a gentleman here, Mr. Keller, who is working on the Woodland Foods Resolution. And, um, because he has a, a scheduling issue this evening, I would like to be able to move that up on the agenda. So if I could get a motion from Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco, to move that item up, uh, on the agenda so that it will come before resolutions and proclamations and presentations. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Okay. So we will take under Joint Finance and Economic Development Committee, I hand off to Alderman Rivera. I'm sorry, Alderman Newsom, I apologize.
That's fine.
Boy, I stepped on a toe there.
No, it could have gone either way.
I'm in trouble.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Approval of redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Waukegan and Woodland Foods Limited. And everyone should have gotten a copy of that. Have you had time to read it?
I have a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions on that, for sure. I just read it tonight, and I've got...
I will take a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Rivera, to approve the redevelopment agreement. Now, Alderman Tempest, did you want to address it at this point? Or would you like to address it at item B, where they're actually talking about the amount of the incentive?
Well, it's all should be together anyway, to be honest with you. Either you're going to approve it or you're not going to approve it. I have...
One is an ordinance and one is a redevelopment agreement.
Well, they're, they're both tied into each other, as I read it.
If you'd like to speak to it now, that'd be great. That would actually be fine. It's no problem.
Says the developer is unwilling, it says the developer is unwilling and unable to undertake the completion of the project without certain tax increment financing. Uh, I would ask the attorney out there, how long you been in business out there?
Thank you, Mayor Alderman. Alderman Tempest, um, the agreement is written as though the work has not yet been done.
That's what I'm reading.
That, that's...
My question, sir, to make time short, how long you been in business out there?
Oh, I'm, I'm the, I'm your attorney.
You're the attorney. How long?
He's our attorney.
Oh, you're our attorney?
Yes.
Oh, my God. Well, how long they been in business?
I beg you, so far.
How long they been in business? I'll be nicer to you. I like to cross-examine too, I guess.
I don't know exactly. Mr., Mr. Moore is the president of the company, and he can, he can tell you exactly how long.
Well, I'd like to know, how long have they been in business out there? We're coming with...
David, how long have you been in business? Since, what, what, at what point in time did you officially license?
In Waukegan?
Yes.
August.
August of this year.
August of last year, sorry.
Last, before that. Seems I was out there August of last year, went through a tour, but looked like they'd been in operation for a while before that.
No.
You're up and running, not until August of last year?
Correct. August 1st of last year, we began operations, finished construction at the end of July. I think our permit, occupancy permit was approved in the fourth week of July.
Okay. July of 11. Okay. I would think, if I was a developer and, and in charge, especially if I was a councilman in Lake Forest, Illinois, I would have this contract all tied up before I went forward. It seems the horse is out of the barn, and now we're coming back. And then it says, the city agrees to fund certain TIF eligible costs. Want $1,500,000. Is that upfront?
That is, yes.
Upfront. Now, this is a TIF area, right?
Correct.
And I guess to Tina's question, how much money do we have in the TIF area?
It's new test.
Do we have money in the TIF? Wait a minute. We have a TIF area. That's tax increment financing. We're going to freeze the tax levy, and the increase is going to go into this fund. But they want me to give them $1.5 million upfront, and you want me to put a bond out there to give them the money that they want ahead without a prior agreement? I'm a little confused. I'm a little confused.
Do you want, actually want me to...
Yeah, help me out here a little bit. Help me out, you're both, because I'm, we're talking money now, and Mayor, comes to money. I'm sorry. We don't know if we got this much money.
The, the TIF, the TIF was just established, so it'll take, it'll start receiving its increment in this upcoming tax year.
But they want $1.5 million announced, correct?
Correct. So it would have to be a general obligation bond that would be issued.
You want me to take out a bond to give them $1.5 million and me to wait for the money to come in? Is that what you're telling me?
A method to finance this agreement is simply being presented to you. It would have to be a general obligation bond. If the increment is sufficient, the debt service would then be abated off of the property tax bill and paid for with the increment. That's the way the financing is currently contemplated with what's being presented to you tonight.
And is there enough money in the tax, I would, to be abated to take care of this?
We won't know that until the increment starts coming into that district.
We won't know that.
Correct.
But we're going to put a $1.5 million bond out there, not knowing if there are going to be enough money coming in from those taxes to take care of. Is that what you just told me?
Yes, and that's why it has to be a general obligation bond issue.
And he had no prior agreement before he went into this, no written prior agreement in writing that he was going to get it.
That would be an economic development issue, and either Noel or Ross would have to...
Never came before. I went out there and, and had a lunch out there and went through the facility, but we had no agreement. Okay, I'm not done yet. I read all this stuff. Then we're going to make a job incentive plan. I would like to see a list of all his current employees and where they live, their address. Make a job for up to a total number of 200 residents payable from the available TIF funds as follows. For somebody making $20,000 to roughly $30,000 a year, we're going to give them a cash payment of $2,500. And somebody that's making out there a new job for $30,000 to $54,000, we're going to give the corporation $5,000. And for somebody making $55,000 to $80,000, we're going to give them $7,500. Then for each new job with an annual wage base salary of $80,000 or more, we're going to give the developer a little bonus of $10,000. The only catch is that residents have to live in Waukegan 90 days technically before they're hired. Doesn't say anything about remaining in Waukegan. Doesn't say anything about stretching out the payments if they're in Waukegan. Oh, boy. The city determines the sole discretion that after paying other obligations, TIF disrevenue and the special tax inadequate to cover the job incentive period, the city shall issue the developer its non-interest bearing promissory note. So we don't have enough money in that TIF to take care of that. We're going to give them a promissory note, non-interest. My God. Well, then it says here, you've got this written councilor for us, like it, it's just going to happen. It's already happened, but you're in the other tents. Says the developer shall promptly commence construction, hell, they've already done it, within 30 days after the effective date of this agreement, provided, uh, that the city notify them in writing and so forth. You know, TIFs are nice, but this guy went ahead on his own without an agreement in place. You're forming a TIF. You're asking me as a council member, we've got $120 million in debt now, am I pretty close? 120. You want me to go another $1.5 million in debt, not knowing that TIF will come? That TIF money will, if I am correct, the extra money that comes in goes into that money that would pay for. Am I correct?
Correct.
Now, is that from this date forward, or do they backdate this?
Backdate.
From this date forward that it's done, am I correct?
Being a county would be...
Well, it says here, a million and a half, if funds are available. Otherwise, we've got to take a bond to give them that right now.
Correct.
We've got to take a bond for a million and a half dollars so he can stay in operation, We gotta take a bond for $1.5 million, so he can stay in operation, I guess.
Well, I can only speak to my name, just to the merits of the...
Would you vote for this?
No.
I'm putting you on the spot. As my finance...
Yeah, that's not fair.
Well, hell, hey, she's my finance director, and she's got me in a... We're in $120 million in debt now, and I'm asking if she... I'm not voting for any more bond issues. Don't even ask me to. We're $120 million in debt now. Plus, I don't know what he charged me to run... Type this up.
Could I... Alderman, could I say one thing, though?
I'd like to hold it over.
If I could... Well, let's wait a second before we go that route. You know, you talked about the $120 million in debt. Now, when we walked into this building, we were without enough cash to keep the day-to-day operations from going. We had no choice but to issue working cash bond.
I understand that.
The bond... The debt level of this city was already at close to $100 million when I walked in the door. So we've had to add some. We've had to add some. But it's not... But I wanna make sure everybody understands. We just did not come in here and take out $120 million in debt.
Oh, no, no. That... Most was there already, man. I'm not...
Right. So, but I wanna make sure that's understood. The... Let me just say this about economic development. Every single job that we get, every single corporation that we try to bring to this city, there's a knuckle-bruising component to it. There's a fight. What we don't do, someone else will. We need the businesses here, so we have to use the tools we have to get them. These are our tools to attract businesses that don't want to come to this area. Now, we got this business from Gurnee. That's a coup. It cost us a little... It would've cost Gurnee to keep them. So someone was going to make a deal with Woodland Foods, whether it was us, Gurnee, Wadsworth, whoever it was. We made the deal. We've tried to make the deal in a way that would, one, encourage him to hire Waukegan residents; two, not use instrumentality of incentive that is unusual or illegal; and, number three, try to do something that protected us if the company were to leave for some reason. We have a clawback agreement, so that we get some of this back if he doesn't stay here for a given amount of time. So none of this is unusual. None of this is below the surface. We've been upfront about every single word in this agreement to everybody up here. I would respectfully ask the Alderman, please, to give us the opportunity to vote on this tonight, to show that we understand how the economic development world works, that we are open to companies coming to Waukegan, and that when they do come, when we bring them into these chambers, that we do our very best to make sure, one, that they're treated fairly, and that the city is treated fairly. And I think that's the Alderman's main concern, which is to make sure that the City of Waukegan is treated right and that we don't get taken advantage of. I think this agreement tonight does successfully do all of that. I'm hoping that he will allow us to move it forward, because we have so many people up here at this dais that have been working on this hard, that have been researching it, going to meetings, and would like to see it move forward.
I would like to see... How many employees do you presently have? How many of those people are located in Waukegan? What is their annual salary? You know, I've been through the... I've been through it. I went through their deal.
Right.
And then on page 11, they pointed out repayment obligation. He wants $1.5 million upfront. And it's a... Am I correct? How many-year TIF? 23 years? 23-year TIF?
That's how long a TIF lasts.
So how... And so we're getting him $1.5 million upfront. Then how much money per year?
Depends on who he hires from the City of Waukegan, though, as far as how that's generated.
Okay, that's extra money coming after that. Am I correct, each year?
That's correct.
You know? And then, on page 11, I guess you do have some repayment obligation. In the event the developer relocates his business outside of Waukegan during the term of its current lease... Its current lease. Are they leasing that building?
Correct.
Oh, they're leasing the building?
Yes.
And who's the owner of the building?
I don't know that.
I'd like to know that, too. I'd like to know who the owner of the building is. They're leasing it? I can't believe he went in there as a councilman in Lake Forest. Should know the legal ramifications.
I think I need to say something about that, Alderman.
Please do.
Long before we sat down and began to negotiate with Woodland Foods, we, the city's negotiating team, this council adopted an inducement resolution, which says that any TIF-eligible expenses that the developer, Woodlands, incurs, prior to the execution of this agreement, will be eligible for reimbursement. Council adopted that inducement resolution prior to the time we began negotiating...
Well, we did not have an agreement with them to do it.
It was prior to... We did not have an agreement with them. We did not have the final agreement. That's what this is.
We didn't have an agreement. You didn't have a document.
But that's the purpose of an inducement resolution. It takes time to put together an agreement of this type, and this was an especially complicated one.
And what assurance do we have? Suppose they get a $1.5 million. Suppose they fold in two years. What happens? What happens to us?
They gotta pay.
What do you mean, gotta pay? They're leasing the building.
If they... Well, if they move out, you've got a clawback provision. The company owes the city every dime that the city has invested in that business.
I just went bankrupt. I went under.
Well, you know, if everybody go... If anybody goes bankrupt, then it's up for grabs. You can't... Nobody has any guarantees of bankruptcy.
It could be up for grabs, huh?
It could. Well, yeah, but that's...
Any agreement has that risk to it.
Okay, I'm just letting you have the other side. Your mayor... Mayor, you wanna push it through? I'm not gonna hold that up, but I'll be voting no.
I understand. Absolutely.
I made my point, I guess.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman. And I understand. And you know what? Don't... You know, I think Alderman Tempest is just trying to watch out for the fiscal health of the community, and wants to make sure we have a good deal. And I understand that. I truly do.
Mayor, I'm concerned. I'm not trying to pick on anybody. I am concerned about the economic health of Illinois, even not just Waukegan.
But this helps. It keeps them out of Wisconsin, keeps them out of Pleasant Prairie, and it brings them into our community. Those are pluses for all the way around. They're pluses. They bring jobs to the City of Waukegan. As far as the names of the people that work there and where they live, we can talk to David about that. That's not something that, you know, is secret information.
How many employees do they actually have now?
I'm not sure. But it's an ongoing, growing business. So it's something he's got... He's bringing equipment in there with a great deal of value. He's made changes to the building that have value.
It's already in there. They've done it already.
I think it's worth it. But I appreciate the fact you're gonna allow us to go ahead and vote on it tonight, Alderman. Thank you very much. We have the motion, and we have the second, on approval of the redevelopment agreement by and between the City of Waukegan and Woodland Foods Limited. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Nay.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
I'm gonna vote no, and I'll explain my motion, even though the business in the TIF district is in my ward. A comment to you, sir. A million and a half to pay him back. You've already... How much have you put in? About $5 mil already?
The investment in Waukegan is just a hair under $10 million.
Okay. So this is an inducement to give him back $1,500,000 of the 10. All right? So that's where we stand on that. What I don't like is that tonight, when I first came in here, I was handed this new agreement. And on it, it says, we have a new paragraph here, Paragraph D on page 11, and what it reads is a repayment obligation. "In the event that the developer relocates his business," I assume that's Woodland Foods, "outside of Waukegan during the term of its current lease for any reason other than force majeure," and I found out what I didn't know what the heck that was, so I found out today it was an act of God. "Developer shall be obligated to the city in the full amount of all funds received by the developer pursuant to this agreement. Developer shall give the city no less than 60 days' notice of the intent to terminate its operations in Waukegan. Payment of developer's obligation to the city shall be made within a 60-day period." My question to you, sir, is, this is a brand-new thing. It wasn't on our last... That we got last time, and I was already to vote for it, and now I see this, I'm voting no. And my question to you is, so if Woodland Foods... It's a 10-year lease, am I correct?
11.
11. But we're not signing it until '12, so he's already been in there a year.
Yeah, I think he's got...
Okay. So it's 10, 10 or 11 years.
Yes.
Woodland Foods decides to leave at nine years and 11 months. We're gonna ask him back for $1,500,000?
Yes.
Wrong. Bad business. How about a prorated? Something that should be prorated on this. 10% a year, a buck in a... A $1,500, or, excuse me, $150,000 a year.
This issue came up at the Finance Committee discussion last Monday. Alderman Moisio specifically raised this issue. And it is, as a result of the discussion and the decision that came out of the Finance Committee, that this clause was put into the agreement, I sent it to the city, I don't know, a couple of days after the last meeting, sometime in the middle of the last week. In a conversation with Mr. Moore after the Finance Committee meeting last week, he agreed to exactly these terms. This is not something that's being forced down his throat. He agreed to those terms. Now, he may have... Now, he may wanna say something about that, I don't know. But he agreed to that, and it was drafted in accordance with the agreement was made at that... It was made at that meeting.
And you and I have had many discussions, and I apologize for taking so long, but this is the first business that's coming in. And it's in my ward, and I wanna make sure the business is taken care of. And we've been at this a long time. We wanna induce people to come in here to Waukegan to use that TIF district. Mayor, would you allow him to say?
First time you saw this.
I'm sorry, Alderman Valco.
Do you think it's appropriate? The attorney said that you could ask him if he's okay with it. I don't... Is it appropriate?
He's agreed to the contract that we have before us, and I would like to say one thing about this clawback agreement. This should've been in... And I'm gonna take complete blame for the fact that the clawback agreement wasn't there from day one. Because I will tell you, and everybody knows that when we sit in a meeting, whenever I sit and talk to a company, a corporation, about structuring, whether it's incentives or whatever it might be, whether it's tax money, TIF, whatever it is, I believe in clawback agreements if, for some reason, the other party doesn't live up to their part of the agreement, and the City of Waukegan has to protect its resources and has to protect its investment. And I think a clawback agreement certainly should've been in there, and it is cer... I will not assign blame for this to anybody but myself. It should've been in there. It wasn't. It's my fault. It's in there now, and it will do what it's supposed to do, which is to protect the interest of the City of Waukegan and the use of our TIF money in this zone. So Alderman, point the finger at me. I do take the hint on it.
No, I would never do that. I just can't... If I was a businessman, and I'm taking a 10-year deal, if I'm there nine and a half years, I don't wanna pay back the full boat. That's only my concern. That's my main concern.
The veteran get nothing?
They have to pay the full amount back, sir.
Sure, but the agreement...
Let's...
Come after the fact.
You know, if I could, I don't wanna sugarcoat anything, but I think we really should be focusing on the fact that this is a win for the City of Waukegan. This is a plus for our community. We wanna work with Mr. Moore, and we have. Mr. Moore, I think, is gonna be a great addition to our business community. And I think that's what we should be focusing on right here, right now, is that this is a win for us.
It's a great deal.
It's maybe not the best deal in the world that... For everybody, but you know what? Sometimes the best deals made are the one that everybody walks away ticked off, 'cause then you know you found that middle ground, but everybody can live with it. So I think that's where we are right now. And I honestly think that Mr. Moore's going to find that as a place to do business, he's got a good partner in the city, will always work with them, will make sure that, you know, he doesn't have undue... I'm not sure what the right... What word I'm trying to use, but let's put it this way. This is a good partnership. We will profit from it. He will profit from it. And I think we move forward, and we show the rest of the business community that we can strike a deal, and we can live with it, and it's one that makes sense financially for everybody. That's what we're trying to do. That's part of what we're doing here tonight. So, you know, Alderman Valco, I do understand, because we've had the conversation in the past about your concern, you know, about what the TIF was and about his level of investment. I think Alderman Tempest makes a good point, in the sense that $1.5 million plus the amount of money per employee does end up being a pretty good deal, may not be perfect.
1.7. That's... I have no problem with that.
Yeah, but I think it's a pretty good deal.
I have no problem with that at all. It's just that if something happens nine years and 10 months away, it's a great deal for the city. It's not such a good deal for Woodland Foods.
There is a risk. You're right, Alderman. There is a risk, and...
They pay risks typically. That's where the rewards come from.
Our goal is to build a community that he can thrive in.
Absolutely.
And let's keep working on that.
Absolutely, sir.
I don't want to insert myself into the policy debate, but I would say that-
I'm sorry, Alderman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I don't, I'm not, don't mean to insert myself into the policy discussions. That's, that's your bailiwick, not, not mine, but I would say that another point to keep in mind is that the cities, the cities going into this deal on the basis of Woodlands is going to be here for 11 years. And if, if Woodlands decides for its own reasons that it's gonna leave earlier than that, then it's not living up to the commitment that it's made in, in, in this agreement. The city is making this investment in Woodlands for an 11-year period. Company decides it's gonna shorten that, then the company hasn't done what it, what it said it was going to do. It's just another, another way to look at, at, at this, at this clawback provision.
Okay, thank you, Paul. We appreciate that. If we might, was there another question from the Alderman, or?
Did you want to allow, uh-
Oh, oh, Dave, I'm sorry. Did you want to actually come up and make a statement?
Please.
Would you please take any favor, come up here, so that it's, it's picked up on the system?
We're in the middle of a-
Alderman, what's, well, it's already been opened up.
We've started down this path.
I understand.
This has been a catastrophe from the word go.
I did not mean to open the door like I should have.
No, it's okay. It's all right. We will survive this experience, all of us.
First of all, thank you for your time tonight, and I'll be very brief. I just wanted to point out that the nature of the TIF, and the conversation that Attorney Keller had in the hallway is that the, the amount of money, the inducement that I'm hopefully receiving this evening in, in the form of the ordinance, is directly related to the investment I've already made in Waukegan. There is no part of the redevelopment agreement except for the clawback, which was put in after the Finance Committee talked about it, that has anything to do with anything forward-going. The investment's been made. The investment was made with an agreement in the form of an ordinance with Waukegan that obligated Waukegan to act in good faith, and induced me to proceed with haste, I believe is the language, with my investment in Waukegan. And I think it's important to note that, that I have already lived up to my obligation, albeit the agreement sounds like I haven't. That's the nature of the legal-
That's not the case.
That's not the case.
Absolutely not.
And it's all, it has to do with the but for. But the inducement ordinance got us around that in a, in a legal and appropriate way, informing everybody in an, in an obligatory way how to proceed. And I just wanted, that hasn't been said here, and I think it was important to say, and I just wanted to say thanks again for your time. And I've been at Lake Forest City Council since 3:30 in budget meetings, I apologize.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, could we continue with the vote then, please? Let's finish.
Alderman Rivera.
Well, I, I vote aye, and, and the reason why I'm voting aye is, he said it. He just said it just now. This man has invested already close to $10 million. And he could have easily gone to Wisconsin. You know, Wisconsin, the state of Wisconsin, offered him a, a way better deal. And for him to want to invest in the city of Waukegan and put up $10 million, that to me shows that this man is committed to be in Waukegan, and not only that, to be successful in this community. So I vote aye.
Alderman Conken.
And for the reasons the Mayor and Alderman Rivera gave, I vote aye also.
Thank you. The ayes have it. It passes. Thank you. And again, we appreciate all the comments. I don't want anybody to think that anybody's, you know, not being listened to. We do listen, and we understand. Next would be Item B.
Item B, approve ordinance providing for the issuance not, of not to exceed 1.7 million general obligation tax increment bond, Series 2012B, Woodland Foods Project of the City of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois, and for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds. And I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Rivera. And we have a comment by Alderman Rivera, or?
I know it says 1.7 million, but Tina, what was the reason for the extra 200,000, so the audience knows?
It's for the tax.
Hold on, I just want-
Tax and post-fund interest or something.
Because we, the tax levy comes in-
Right.
A year and a half later, we have to borrow the first year's interest on the bond. So that includes capitalized interest and cost of interest.
Well, thank you. I just wanted the audience to know that.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. David, thank you, and welcome to Waukegan. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna have a good partnership in the long run. I absolutely believe in that. Thank you very much. All right, now we will get-
I'm sorry.
Yes, we will go back now to the regular agenda. Resolutions and proclamations and presentations. Item A, the Joshua Project, if you'd like to come up. And this is something I think you're all gonna be interested in.
Thank you, Mayor and council members here. My name is Cynthia Dockery-Harris, and I'm the founder and executive director of Operations for Employee Connections. We reside here, my office is here in Waukegan, on Washington Street, and we are a non-profit training and staffing agency here. We operate a little differently because our heart is with the community, and trying to develop training programs to get individuals ready for the workforce. We have a focus on low-income and disadvantaged individuals here in Lake County and the surrounding areas within Lake County. Last year, we were, we were really honored and blessed to receive two mini grants, and Mayor, if I could just pass these to the council members.
Thank you.
We received two mini grants, one from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, and the Lake County Community Foundation. Those two grants allowed us to provide a program, which we named the Joshua Project, a basic computer skills training program. It's free. It's free to any individual here in Lake County, Waukegan, North Chicago, Zian, who is at a low-income level or disadvantaged level. It's a five-week basic computer soft skills training course, and your age limit on it is income, for low-income youth ages 18 and older, and adults in residence of Lake County, Illinois. We've had open enrollment, and we're continuing with the open enrollment through to May of this year. This course offers computer lab hands-on experience using current integrated software package of Microsoft Office, and eligible applicants will learn the fundamentals, the fundamentals of computer, mouse, keyboard, monitor, and system unit. How to apply and use productivity software in a business environment. In addition, how to fundamentally use a computer effectively with its essentials. How to use and create a Microsoft Word 2000 document. How to use, create, and maintain a workbook, pivot table, and data in Microsoft Excel 2007. How to use, create, present a Microsoft PowerPoint presentation. And how to do a job search using the Illinois Worknet. Our agent is a certified Illinois Worknet advisory site. So this is a great opportunity for those who cannot afford to take a computer class. This is free. This is free. And current, we have about 100 slots available. We have two more five-week courses that are going to be taking place. The next one is going to be April, May, starting on April 17th of this year. Then we have another, the last five-week course is going to be May to June, starting May 22nd of this year. We would really like to encourage everyone, if you know someone who is in need of computer skills, let them know about this particular program. In our agency, we've learned in trying to connect employers to employees who are sustainable. A lot of employers do not want to hire employees or, or candidates for employment that do not have computer skills. So this is a way, in terms of giving back to the community, where individuals who really want to work and are committed, if they're committed to a five-week program that will benefit them long-term, just to come two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, 3:30 to 5:30. And if we have an overflow class, we will also have a second timeframe from 5:30 to 7:30 on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We really want everyone who can and will take advantage of this program to please do so. We're excited about it, and it's gonna be a great, great opportunity moving forward. We're hoping to, the funds, the funds will last through to June of this year. We reapplied for additional funds to extend it, and also extended a sec, well, the site right now is in North Chicago. We have one site in, in North Chicago where we do the training, but we're, we reapplied to extend it to a second site, so we'll have two sites, one being right here in downtown Waukegan, at First Baptist Church. So we are hopeful that that will take place, but we just wanted everyone to know to take advantage. There's, there's so many opportunities out here, and the reason why I was deemed the Joshua Project, if you know anything about Joshua, the land was there for them. What they had to go in and take possession of, you had to do something. This program is free, of no clause to anyone who is in a low-income status, and there's, there's a criteria here. And if you want to find out more about how to apply to the Joshua program, you can call our office at 847-360-7177. And we will tell you more about how to actually apply to the program. But it's a, a great opportunity, even if there's employees here within the city of Waukegan that need these skill sets, and they meet the requirements, please send them our way. We have about 100 slots left. First come, first served. We want to make sure that the residents get that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. We appreciate what you're doing. We'll get this information on our website, too, so that it'll get some more exposure. We'll hopefully be able to get the graphics when this is replayed and shown on YouTube, so that the phone number and some of the other contact information can be scrolled in underneath your presentation. So thank you very much. And I'm sure you're also open to taking donations as well, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, any businesses, owners that see this, anybody up here, anybody in the audience that, you know, have, would like to throw a check for five, or 10, or 50, or 100, I'm sure she'd be very happy to take it.
Yes, we will. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you for your time, and thanks for the project.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution, which is for a gentleman by the name of Fred Abdullah. Now, Fred was a longtime friend of our family, and has been a longtime friend to the community. Bank of Waukegan is something that he was actually central to helping create. Local businesspeople know that the Bank of Waukegan has been a go-to lending institution and financial institution in this community for a long time. Mr. Abdullah is leaving from active work with the bank, and they're having an event for him tomorrow. So they asked us to do a proclamation in his name. So, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to advise everyone out there that tomorrow at 1 o'clock, they'll be dedicating a street to Mr. Abdullah, just south of the Bank of Waukegan on Lewis Avenue. Resolution 12R17. Whereas Fred Abdullah served his country with pride, honor, and dignity as a member of the United States Marine Corps during World War II in the South Pacific. And whereas Fred Abdullah is a graduate of the Waukegan High School and the University of Illinois. And whereas Fred Abdullah began his first business, Aircon Refrigeration and Heating Incorporated, in downtown Waukegan in 1955. And whereas Fred Abdullah has served on numerous boards and committees, including the Lake County Contracts Association Board of Directors, Waukegan Business Association Chairman of the Board, Bank of Waukegan, Chairman and President of the Northern States Financial Corporation, and the Board of the Jancy Theater, to name but a few. And whereas Fred Abdullah has set the standard of excellence for others to strive to achieve. And whereas Fred Abdullah has given of himself with such devotion that he has earned the respect, admiration, and friendship of the citizens of our community through his professional leadership and dedication. Now therefore be resolved that Mayor Sabanjan and City Council of Waukegan, Illinois desires to publicly recognize and show their respect and appreciation to Fred Abdullah for the substantial impact he has made on our community, not only in the past 60 years, but for many years to come. Further be resolved that a suit and involves copy of this resolution signed by the Mayor and City Clerk be presented to Fred Abdullah dated this 19th day of March, 2012. And this will be presented tomorrow afternoon at the street dedication.
Okay.
Like to move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Or, I'd like to second it.
I'm seconding it.
Oh, okay.
And?
That's fine.
And Newsom.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And Ralph, what item was that, that you were just referring to, real quick?
I'm referring to Item C, Public Works Committee, and I know I spoke-
Item C, okay. Now, tomorrow they're gonna have a special-
Alderman Moisio spoke with me early about it, but I really want to see a separate vote on that.
Sure, absolutely.
Because I want to make my comments on that.
Okay. Tomorrow, we will be presenting, if Mr. Abdullah is able to attend the event tomorrow, we will presenting him with the proclamation that we just read this evening. And if he's not, I'll make sure it gets to him wherever he is. You know, if he, if I have to take it to his home, or whatever we need to do, we will make sure he gets it. But-
He hardly breathes.
And also, that's right, we're doing an unveiling of a street for him as well. So he's, he's got quite a day ahead of him. So, all right, now, we're going to take the majority of the remaining items on the agenda in what they call an omnibus. And I'm gonna hand this off to Corporation Counsel. He'll walk us through this process, because there are three items that are going to be held out of that process for vote. Corporation Counsel?
The three items to be removed from the omnibus vote at this juncture, Item C under Public Works Committee, Item G under Public Works Committee, and Item A under Finance Committee. If there are any other items that any of the Aldermen would wish to remove from the omnibus vote, please speak now.
Okay, very well. On behalf of the Chair, I'll entertain a motion to employ the omnibus vote this morning, or this, this evening, for the remaining items on the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Rivera. And roll call, please.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Ayes have it.
On behalf of the Chair, I'll entertain a motion, then, to pass and approve the following items. Item A under Public Safety Committee, waive the bid process to purchase eight overt surveillance cameras and associated video software from the sole source provider, RMS Technology Solutions, Buffalo Grove. Be purchased with capital improvement bond funds for total costs not to exceed $98,382. The bond cost center line item will be 307-1307-263923. Item A under Public Works Committee, approve to extend the current custodial contract for City Hall and the Police Department with patmar janitorial services with no cost increase from an amount not to ex, for an amount not to exceed $85,020. Funds for this are available in line item 10910624438. Item D under Public Works, the board that toured 2012-
Where is she?
B.
We didn't do B. Item B.
Oh, pardon me. Item B, thank you. Grant permission to purchase salt and renew our current price per ton with the Illinois Department of Central Management Services. Funds for this are available in light item 22892282545. Item D under Public Works, award 2012 Water Plant Chemicals as presented. Funds are available in light item 555915725464. Item E, grant utility easement to Comet on the OMC property. This will be a 20-foot easement for the described purposes as presented. Item F, advertise for bid for roof repairs to the 1927 side of the water treatment plant. Funds are available using bond proceeds in line item 555916027043. Moving to joint public works finance, item A, authorize extension of the contract with Public-
That's being held out, Council. That's the one you said that was being held out?
No.
No? Okay. He did say that, but that's okay.
C and G under Public Works are held out.
C, G, and A under Finance.
A under Finance.
I'm sorry, okay, I wanted to make sure. Thank you. Okay, sorry. My apologies.
Again, under joint public works finance, item A, authorize extension of the contract with Public Financial Management, Inc., for the development of a City of Waukegan Water Service Expansion Business Plan Phase 2A, in an amount not to exceed $60,000 plus expenses, budget code 555916024438. Item B, authorize extension of the contract with MWH Americas, Inc., for a water supply expansion analysis engineering study, Phase 2A, in an amount not to exceed $65,000 plus expenses, budget code 555916024435. Item C, authorize the Director of Public Works to obtain easements via caution agreement with North Shore Gas Company for the purpose of water main placement at 2649 Delaney Road and 37025 Delaney Road. The city share of the agreement totaling $17,771.15, budget code 555916027043. Moving to the Finance Committee, item B, authorize the City of Waukegan's allocation of $172,685 to fund the 2012 budgeted expenditures for Yeoman Creek Superfund Site Remedial Action, payable to the Yeoman Creek RIFS Trust, budget code 109-910124403. Under-
New business.
A is being held. It is being held. Under New Business Recommended Actions-
Okay, hold on. New, I think we've, we've lost-
I thought it was Item A.
Under Finance Committee, is Item A being held for the vote?
Yes, yes. A is being held.
Yes.
I thought it was A and but-
No, it was-
Finance Committee.
No. Under Public Works Committee, we, we held out C and G.
Correct.
Under Finance Committee, we held out A.
Correct.
We passed it in the committee.
They both handed in A, that was the safety measure.
Yes, we had, I had an Alderman request to hold it out.
Who, who wanted to hold that one out?
Which one?
The cameras.
A under Finance.
Me. I want to talk about it.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're voting everyone.
That's good. We're good.
I'm trying to be nice.
We're good.
Excuse me.
I don't like this.
Your Honor? Yes, all, one moment. Alderman Conken.
Doesn't Item A with the Finance Committee coincide with the only item in the Public Safety Committee?
Well, he wants to talk about it a little bit.
I was gonna say, if one's held out, shouldn't they both be held out?
We want to talk about it.
So the same motion?
Yes, the same.
They're the same motion.
What's that?
I mean, it's the same motion. That's all right.
Okay.
Let's continue.
It's a different agenda item.
Just a different agenda item. We can just treat it as a different agenda item.
Sure.
Okay.
On a new business- Under New Business Recommended Actions, item A, approval of payroll dated March 9, 2012, in the amount of $1,275,975.14. Item B, approval of bills dated March 16, 2012, in the amount of $1,237,888.13. Let me say it again. $1,237,888.13. Item C, to receive the Treasury report for the month of February 2012.
Item D will be held out.
Item D will, will, will be, will also exclude, because it's a presentation.
Okay.
On behalf of the Chair, again, motion to approve and pass the items read. Roll call, please. Wait me a second.
No, you have to have a motion in a second.
Motion.
On this, on this.
Oh.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Newsom. A roll call, please.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. I'm sorry, Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. Thank you. Now we're returned to those items that were held out. I believe the first one in the roll of the agenda would be under Public Works- I believe the first one in the roll of the agenda would be under Public Works, Item C. So if Public Works would like to address Item C, please.
Award two thousand and twelve mowing contract to GNS Services of Beach Park, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed one hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. Funds are available in line item one hundred nine one zero six two four four one zero, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Rivera. And I believe you wanted to comment on this?
Well, I'm not gonna second it.
You won't second it.
Uh, if you can...
Seconded by Alderman May.
But I do have a comment. When it comes for...
Hold on a second. Hold on a moment. We have some...
Clarification of the motion.
Clarification on the motion.
I believe the motion is the best qualified bidder.
Best qualified bidder, yes.
It wasn't included in your motion.
Correct.
Oh, 'cause it's not actually on the language of the agenda. So I think he was reading strictly from the language of the agenda.
You need that in the motion. You need that in the motion.
Can you put that in? Do I need to read?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could you repeat that motion then, please?
Award two thousand and twelve mowing contract to the best qualified bidder to GNS Services of Beach Park, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed one hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. Funds are available in line item one hundred nine one zero six two four four one zero, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman May. Any comments on this? Alderman Rivera?
My comment is, and the alderman spoke to me earlier about this, and my question is, when you say the best qualified, that's fine, I understand that, but was the bidder given a fair chance to be the best qualified? Was he given all the information? Oh, I'm gonna let you give a chance to, uh, was, when they go out for bids, was everything, was he given the opportunity? Because I know they brought up the question of these vacant lots that the city owns. Was that presented to him before he was able to bid on this? And that's my question. I just wanted to make sure he had a fair chance in bidding for this.
You know, the clerk actually is, receives these items coming in, bids and contracts, and there's something he would like to speak to on this matter, if you don't mind, so...
No, please do.
When I opened the bids, we, there were three, there were three bidders for this particular item. As we went through the bids, his bid was substantially lower than all the other bids. It was fifty-three thousand dollars, the low, who, he was in fact the low bidder. But then, and you take into consideration, he didn't provide certain things that were mandated in the bid. Automatically, he became not the low qualified bidder. Secondly, something that really jumped out at me in particular was when he bid the project, he bid for, to cut the grass, the lawns, individual lawns, sixteen hundred dollars per lawn. That's something that I found extremely unusual, and Tom Haggerty and I discussed that. I had an opportunity to speak to him on the telephone about this misstep on his part, what I thought was a misstep on his part. And I advised him that there was a substantial number of homes in Waukegan that needed to be mowed. And his response to me was, he thought there were just a handful of lawns, so therefore he put that number in there. And I advised him there were around fourteen hundred homes that had to be bid, had to be cut repeatedly through the summer, which would make his bid the highest of the three. So, but I'm sure that the alderman would like to address that as well.
I talked to Mr. Haggerty about this. He said he was not, did not submit some things that were crucial to the bid process. Mr. Haggerty talked to Corporation Counsel. Corporation Counsel said that was fine, he was not qualified. End of story. There it is. I so move.
One, another question that I have is, did it go up? What was the last year's contract? How much, how much did we pay the last?
I don't know, but Mr., I think it's a little bit around the same, but Mr. Haggerty has been very, very pleased with this company and their, and their thing. And remember, these guys came to bat for us in the storm, and they helped us out. So he's been very, very, very happy with this contractor and their work. Very happy.
Very well, and I appreciate those, the information. I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Postellet had a fair opportunity in bidding for this, his job. And that's all I wanted to make sure.
Understood and appreciated, and next season, hopefully he'll bid again, and, you know, we'll get a little bit more competition out of it. But this year, this is where we are. So we have the motion and the second, and roll call, please.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
I'm gonna vote, uh, no.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Then next, we go down to Item G, which I believe is still under Public Works Committee. And Alderman Moisio.
Draft specifications and advertised for bids for the three connections that have not been repaired that run under the harbor. Funds are available using bond proceeds in line item five 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 nine one six zero two seven zero four three. Remember right, we had these fixed, and we had one go awry, and we had to get it fixed. And this is the major supplier of the city's water service. Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. My concern was, I remember, as chairman, we went under the harbor.
Yeah.
And I just was wondering about the engineering service we had at the time. Was there some fault that they overlooked when we, we had them? Yeah, and that was my concern, why I wanted to discuss, and is there any legal ramifications? Did they, did they, were they derelict in duty when they, when we went under the harbor with this velvet?
Let Corporation Counsel address that.
Very good question, Alderman Tempest. We are seeking an engineering opinion.
Oh, you are.
About the, the performance of prior contractors, both design and installation. And what goes for one, apparently goes for all three, 'cause they were all similar.
I remember when the one came by the old Maytons, or they had some problems in there when they were doing, I remember that. That's what we're investigating. Thank you, that was my concern.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to discuss it and make sure we're on the same page. At least we get started to look at it, anyway.
Well, we have the motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman May. Could we have a...
This is just a voice vote.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I believe next, we go to Finance Committee. The last item that was held, if I got my notes correct, I tried to keep up with it, was Item A, under the Finance Committee. Is that correct, Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, if you would like to address that, please.
Authorized use of bond proceeds to fund the award of the contract to RMS Technology Solutions, LLC, for the purchase of public safety vehicle and equipment, specifically police overt surveillance cameras, in the amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. Budget code three oh seven, one three oh seven, two six three nine two, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
May I speak to that?
Uh, yes, Alderman.
That's why I held it up. Our budget shortfall is about one point five million dollars. Our lobbyist is about a hundred thousand. Now we want cameras for another hundred thousand. That'll take me down to one point three right away. You want eight cameras, and hell, remember, we put 'em downtown. I don't know what happened to those cameras, they're gone, out by the wayside. Didn't work, weren't used all the time. I just wonder where we're gonna use eight cameras immediately, and could you have gotten by with maybe a smaller amount? You've got eight cameras for almost a hundred thousand dollars. That's eleven thousand plus per camera. Boy, that's a pretty expensive camera. I mean, that camera oughta do a lot of duties, but could you get by with a little less? I mean, you're talking about eight, oh, it's in the bond fund. Well, we gotta pay those bonds back. And maybe, you go through my ward for a little ride, find the potholes. Hell, I could use a hundred thousand dollars with a blacktop, you know, and a patching machine, huh?
You know, if I...
I know from a police standpoint, Mayor, I know where you're coming from. I got more cameras out there, I'm sure cops, I can, but I just wonder, do we need eight? And I just wonder, where the chief's gonna put eight cameras for it?
Oh, I think we'll find places for eight cameras. I know the Four Corners could certainly use a couple of them.
You're talking about the gang?
Let's not, let's not say where we're gonna put these cameras.
Yes, absolutely. We can, we will find places for these things very quickly. And I'd like to speak, if I could, very quickly about the cost per camera. Actually, the cost per camera for a professional, high, high-impact design video camera at that amount is actually a very good price.
What do you know about cameras?
I, unfortunately, more than I'd like to, but it is a very good price. I mean, a consumer camera is in the four to seven thousand dollar range for a high-quality one. So getting one that's designed to take the beating and the weather like these are, I think that it's actually a reasonable price to pay. I think they're gonna have an impact in some of these areas. We've been having long-term problems then.
Well, my thought, we'd get by maybe four?
I don't think it'll have the impact that we would like to see, to have four. I honestly don't.
I'm just trying to cut here and there.
I do understand.
I can't help it, I gotta do it.
I do, but I think this will, this will really be quite an aid to our police department, and it's something that, wherever these cameras go, people flee those areas, and that's proven in Chicago and a lot of different areas. England leads the world in video cameras, and they're very effective on how they operate. So I think this is gonna work out very well. Does it solve all the problems? No. But it will help solve some. It will push some of the activity out of areas, so I think it's worth the investment.
I guess I'd rather start with four and see how these cameras work out, and then expand if I had to. So I'll be voting no.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Alderman.
I'd vote for four.
Oh, yes, Alderman Conken, sorry, I didn't see you, I apologize.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is exactly the type of situation I've discussed with the chief and Steve Jocenko that was speaking here tonight. This is the kind of problem that can alleviate, you know, Willow Road in my area is, is part of the County Forest Preserve, and it's a dark street, and it's not manned very well, and, or, there's not a lot of people running back and forth on it, but it does have a lot of dumping. And by putting a camera like this up that allows us to see who's doing the dumping and possibly go after them later, at a later date, and the exact situation also with the house he's got a problem with.
Right.
If you throw a camera up on the telephone pole right there on the corner, we might see a little less action that he was complaining about. And it's something to do, and it would work for us without having a police officer constantly at that location. Also, the chief and I have discussed that even if we had ones that weren't working, once they've established themselves as something that do work, you could even put a phony up.
And we've talked about actually making, having Tom's guys make some phonies, to really throw people off.
And so, these, this is a situation where I think, Your Honor, I think you're correct. I hope they do make the impact that we think they are, and that's why we pushed it through the Public Safety Committee.
Great, thank you, Alderman Conken. Yes, Alderman Beadling.
I could use four of those cameras, no.
Well, we will make sure that they're shared evenly, as much as we possibly can. Well, I, I'm gonna leave that up to the chief. I think meddling, so, but you know what? There's no doubt that everybody's gonna get their fair shot at having them, so. Chief, yes, sir?
And one of the points of, and I understand completely, Alderman Tempest, what you're talking about with the cost, but as you can see, one of the big things is having enough to go around. Each ward has their unique problems, so to be able to get eight, to add eight to the complement of three we already have, then we'll have enough to do a lot of more flexibility with the cameras and where they may need to be at a given moment. But the idea is to have at least one in every ward, to work with the neighborhood policing officer to address issues specific to that ward, because each, each ward has unique problems. So that's the need to have as many as we have.
If we could, I'd buy eight for every ward, to be honest with you, because I think they're effective. And you know, there's another thing that chief and I have talked about in regards to this, which is finding a system, a wireless system, that can actually get this signal into a location where it can be constantly monitored. And we've talked to one group, they kinda dropped the ball, but we're looking for other potential partners on that, so that literally, somebody from the police station could be monitoring this, or you could have someone from our Citizens Police Academy that could be monitoring, you know, through, again, through the internet. You'd have to have a code to get on and watch it, but these are things that we're investigating to be able to make these cameras, you know, as effective as they possibly can be. Are we gonna do it right away? No, it'll take time to walk our way into it, but I think that this is a good step. Do we have, do we get a motion on that?
Yes.
Uh, do we have a second?
Newsom and May.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. That concludes, I believe, the business for this evening. We have all... I was going to get there. I, we have a presentation by Treasurer John Schwab. Doc Schwab, if you'd like to proceed.
Yeah, just one second. The audit was published in the paper as required. I want to thank Kevin Boiso of the Finance Department for taking the time to file it and saving the city some money. The auditors would've done it for us, but we took it out of their hands and kept it in-house. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Doc. Appreciate it, appreciate all you do, too. It's a lot of work. Next, we have, we have no ordinances or resolutions. We have alderman's time. Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Moisio.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Chris Blanks was right. Chris Blanks was right. We have, uh, we either are gonna have to adhere to three minutes of audience time or get rid of it and make it unlimited. Well, tonight, we had five minutes and forty-eight seconds, a minute and fifteen, nine minutes and twenty seconds, seven minutes and sixteen seconds, three minutes and twenty-seven seconds, five minutes and nine seconds, eight minutes and ten seconds. Now, there was a time up here when the council was thinking about taking it away, and I was adamantly against it, because it, uh, this is a government by the people, for the people. But if we're gonna do it, either have the three minutes, or four minutes, or five minutes, or six minutes, whatever we decide, or unlimited. But we cannot have this where this person gets to speak for nine, or for fifteen, or for twenty, or for two, or for one. Whatever we're gonna do, let's, let's make our decision. What do we want? Do we want three minutes? Do we want four minutes? Do we want unlimited? I don't know. But we're not adhering to the, to the rule that we set, which was three minutes. We're not doing it, and we haven't done it.
And that's my fault. I, I, I do take the blame for it, because when someone is speaking, as long as they're, they're on a rational path, and they're expressing something that isn't, uh, just attack-oriented, that, you know, makes sense and is, is a reasonable request, I try to give people time to express themselves. But you're right, you know, if we really were gonna be very rigid about this, we probably do need to say, "You have five minutes, you have four minutes. This is up to you guys to decide, this should go to Judiciary Committee. It's something that needs to be discussed." I, I used to have my timer on my phone, and three minutes would come, and I'd just start telling people, "You're done, you know, please sit down," and it'd be halfway through what they were trying to, to get across to us. So I've tried to give myself some, some leeway, and like I said, as long as what they're saying is rational, that it's germane to city business, that it's not just an attack on individuals or whatever, I try to allow them to have time to express themselves within reason.
I mean, I'm not, I, I wanna make people, make it perfectly clear, I am not against audience time. I am for it.
Right.
But if we're gonna do it, just like, just like Mr. Blanks said, you, we better start becoming consistent, because the first time we cut somebody off, you let somebody go for nine minutes, and you cut me off at three. Counselor, are we in court on that? You know we are.
Well...
You know, you know the answer to that. We are gonna be in court because we did not enforce the ordinance that's on the book equally.
Set the time, and I'll enforce it.
Right.
Regardless of where someone is in the comment, I will enforce it. So if you want, you, you need to come out of committee with something that says, limited to five minutes or whatever it ends up being. I'll set my timer on my phone, and regardless of where they are in their, in their comments, we'll, we'll cut it off.
Well, we could maybe, it might be easier for people if you, if we just had a, a little stopwatch.
With reason, yeah.
A little, a little stop thing up there, where we could just set it, and it, just so they know.
Yeah.
I'm not, I mean, like I said, if it was up to me, uh, it could be unlimited, I don't care.
That might not be the, in the best interest of getting the business done in a timely fashion, but I think that some set, and again, like I said, whatever you guys set, I will enforce.
I'm just trying to look out for the city.
What's your recommendation? What's your recommendation?
Okay, I mean, we can come to a, a thing, but I just, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to take over Corporation Counsel's job here, but I've been here long enough to know what gets us in trouble.
I think in the past, too, what we've done, when we were holding strictly to the three minutes, it was up to the council whether to allow that person to continue.
Sure.
Give them some extra time or whatever, or not.
But that can be just as risky, because it can show...
Right, right, that becomes a fair, right, that, and that's what I want to avoid. I want to avoid all that, and I don't want to get, you know...
Well, if they talk, then just let them talk.
Well, why don't we do this? Let's go to committee on, on Judiciary.
Okay.
Decide what you guys want to do. If it's five minutes, which I think probably is reasonable, maximum amount of time, I'll set my timer, and I'll say, "Thank you, five minutes is up." If you, whatever you guys come up with.
I think, in, in so many, lately, so many of these issues that come up, they'd be much better served by the city and by the, the citizen if they, they could get more answers and more dialogue, and not here. Because we're really not, we can't dialogue back and forth with them.
At the committee level, it might work a little bit better.
That, or coming to see you, or coming to see an alderman, whatever. They might get a better response on, on something than coming up here and, and only talking for three, or whatever, whatever we decide, and then they, you know, they can't get an answer. And people get frustrated when they can't get an answer.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you guys make the call, and I'll enforce it.
And, uh, the other thing is, a couple of things, I know this is one of Alderman Beedling's pet peeves, as is mine, but we mentioned, uh, Mayor, the, the litter, the litter fine is seven fifty. Is that right? Is that what we said?
Yes.
Dumping is seven fifty?
Mm-hmm.
And the noise ordinance, the top fine is three fifty? I'm not saying they're equal, but I bet you if you took a poll, people in Waukegan, noise complaints are, are right up there. And I know we've talked about the fi, increase in the fine, um, but we need to maybe look at that. And like, I think you said before, we had a hard time with the judges actually imposing that on people, but, uh, you know, that, that season has come around again, and, uh, that silliness has started again. Uh, I think we all know that, soon as it gets warm, that dum, da dum, da dum, da dum, starts right back up.
That's pretty good, actually.
Yeah, well, I learned from my kids.
That sounds, sounds like salsa.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Beedling.
I just wanna thank the chief for the good job that I see him doing, and, and I'm grateful for my neighborhood policeman, Art Flores, he calls me on a regular basis. When I worked in my, uh, career, we, we didn't have a thing called a grievance. Uh, and, and if you did, you went to the local and you asked, "Hey, this is unfair at work." And our BA would inevitably tell us, or tell me, "Mr. Beedling, if you don't like where you're working, find another job." Our chief i- is, is charged with managing our police department, and he needs the time to organize things. I think he's doing a good job. I, I listen to her radio every day, and, and our police seem to be answering the calls quite readily. I, I, I just would wish that, and we have a lot of very good employees here in the city of Waukegan, I met a lot of very good, hard-working employees, very respectful people. I just wish that the faction that whines, whatever you want to call it, would just cease and desist, come to work, do your job, if you don't like your job, then seek employment elsewhere. Yet, we have too many good employees here that, I, I don't think they should have to put up with that. And, and, and I think everybody deserves a fair chance to do their job every day, so. Other than that, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Pass.
Alderman Tempest.
I'll pass.
Alderman May.
Thank you. Um, I want to remind the residents of Waukegan that currently, vehicle sticker, uh, applications are being processed in the collector's office. There's been some changes this year that you need to be aware of. After, um, March thirtieth, or thirty-one days, March 31st, um, if you buy your ticket in March, it's the same as it was in previous years. After March 31st, in the month of April, your most vehicles stickers go up five dollars. If you don't get your vehicle sticker by the end of April, on May 1st, your sticker will be double. The penalty, penalty this year is a hundred percent. There is no month of, um, grace period, or whatever, has always existed. Your drop dead date this year is April 30th. Otherwise, you're gonna pay double for your, uh, vehicle sticker. If you go on the city website, waukegownweb.net, there's a button you can click right there with the vehicle sticker application that, uh, delineates all the different charges and fees and the dates that I just spoke of. So please go there and get your ticket purchased by, uh, April 30th. Um, I also want to comment on the TIF discussion that we had this evening. Um, I know that our, uh, planning and zoning development, the department is working on